I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recording in progress.
Um, okay.
I will have the deputy clerk do the roll call, please.
Jeff Luther.
Here.
Matt Crowe.
Here.
Eric Sutherland.
Yeah.
Gretchen Yonko.
Here.
Abigail Pickard.
Here.
Lee Schwabs.
Here.
Cody Gents. Mary Solberg.
Here.
Sydney Brennan.
Here.
Ryland Erdman.
Here.
Randy Summerfeld.
Here.
As you can see, I'm not Mayor Knack because he's sitting back there. Why? I don't know. But anyway, I am Mary Solberg. I'm the representative for Ward Eight. And I will, I am the council president, so I will run the meeting tonight in the mayor's supposed absence. I will retain my right to vote, however, and with that, I will pass it off to Eric.
Thank you, Madam President. So tonight, we have with us a very special guest, Ms. Kim Gerth, who is a longtime inspector for the city of Menominee. And she is going to be retiring this Friday. And tonight, we thought it was a great opportunity to honor her. She has worked for the city for over 24 years. She has worked in the inspections department out in the field, providing inspections, helping keep our houses and rentals safe. She has transitioned in her department, and she has provided leadership and assistance to our chief building inspector by managing the office, working up front with members of our community as they help try to build and develop the community that we know and love today. And so we're very, very grateful for all the wonderful years of service Kim has provided to the city. It has been, you can't really, you can't really state enough how much she has contributed to the quality of life in our community. Not to mention, she's just been an absolute pleasure to work with over the years and has added so much to the fabric of our city. So tonight, we would like to ask Kim to come up towards the dais. We'd like to present her with an award for her wonderful service and then hopefully snap some nice pictures. And we know they will. They'll be nice because I will not be in them.
Come on up, Kim.
So much for all your wonderful years. You are just the fabulous person. And if you would like, we got to be front center here. We want the mayor and the chief to be there. Last year, you're not on. Oh, no. That's Lucille. Oh, so you people got them. Okay. So much, Kim. Kim, thank you. Do you want to say a few words for you and Mayor?
I know, I know Dave's full of words.
Yes. I've worked with Kim, what, 11 years now? Yes, I appreciate your education. Yeah, she's attracted me many times.
Well, just to add on top of that, ever since Dave's gotten here, she's been my favorite building inspector. You said that right. Yeah, the only, the only problem is where after she retires, I know she's going to switch over to green and gold. Oh. But thank you, Kim, for all your dedication to the city. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Of course. Okay, now we'll move on to approval of the minutes.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting.
Ryland.
I'll second.
Sydney. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Passed. Okay. Public comments. Public comments, a period of three minutes that you can come up to the podium and speak. Please sign in and give us your address. If you have something that you want to talk about on tonight's agenda. So it's tonight's agenda items only. So if there's anybody out there that wants to speak, please state your plan. Well, okay. Looks like there's nobody that wants to speak. So we will move on into new business. Item four. For a Wistat State Municipal Financial Agreement for USH 12 Red Cedar River Bridge Joint Project Discussion and Possible Action. Who's taking that? Dave?
Yeah, thank you, Mary. So the state will be replacing the joints on the river bridge. This is the eastern bridge, so the northbound US Highway 12 over the Red Cedar River, kind of between Wilson Place and the library. The state, in their infinite wisdom, pays 100% of the construction costs and 75% of the design costs. So we have to pick up the other 25% of the design cost. In this case, the total project is approximately $490,000. Our share is $35,000. They provided us with the state municipal financial agreement that is in your packet. We are recommending approval of the same.
Eric, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I would just like to termine counsel on here. The actual impact to the budget will be incurred in 2026. So we'll be making appropriate appropriations. Bless you. Bless you again. We'll making, we'll be making the appropriate adjustments and recommendations in our 2026 budget to cover these expenses. That's all.
Okay. So Ryland.
Yeah, I just had a, because a couple of basic questions. I assume that this is not any major changes. It's just removal and replacement of similar, you know, it's not going to.
Yeah, honestly, folks probably won't even know that the project was complete when it's done. Lots of concerns about traffic control, I'm sure, during the project, but once it's completed, it really won't look any different.
That was my other question is, will traffic continue on the bridge while they're doing the work?
My guess is that they'll move all the traffic over onto the southbound lanes. I won't know that until they get a little bit further in their design. But they'll be replacing the scissor joints at the ends of the bridges where the, you know, because the bridge can expand and contract a little bit. And there's also points underneath the bridge where it sits on the piers that are going to be replaced as well.
Okay, and these are original to that, the construction of this bridge?
Yes, which I believe was like in 92 or so.
So should be good for another.
I would say probably 30 years, yeah.
Okay. What about the other side of the, of the north or southbound side of the bridge?
That was the original, the, on the, on the other side, the westbound or the west bridge, southbound lanes. That's the original bridge. I guess that there's probably some improvements coming to that one, too. We can see some sagging on the walkway. If you're looking along the walkway, there's some sagging there. They did a polymer overlay here a couple of years ago, and that's really flaking off pretty badly right now. So I would expect that there's going to be some improvements there. They haven't provided us with any idea when that might be on the other bridge.
Okay, thanks.
And Lee, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion approving the Wisconsin DOT State Municipal Financial Agreement for the USH 12 Red Cedar Bridge Joint Project as presented.
Okay. Is there a second? Abby?
I'll second Lee's motion.
Okay, there is a motion to approve and a second. Any other questions or concerns? If not, all of those. Oh, roll call. Yep, yep, yep. Need a roll call vote, please.
Crowe.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Yonko.
Yes.
Pickard.
Yes.
Schwabs.
Yes.
Gents isn't here. Solberg.
Yes.
Brennan.
Yes.
Erdman.
Yes.
Summerfeld.
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item B. Proposed Resolution 2025-11 Regarding Sewer Utility 2024 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report Discussion and Possible Action. I see Paul in the audience. So Paul, would you want to come forward, please?
Yeah, this is my annual report that goes to the DNR every year. It reviews the year of 2024, and then they assign letter grades to each category. So there's effluent quality, bio solids, which is our sludge management, staffing, operator certification, financial management, and collection system maintenance. We did get a grade C in water quality phosphorus. That was for an exceedance in January of 2024 and another one in December of 2024. Our monthly limit is 0.3 milligrams per liter total phosphorus, six-month limit of 0.1. So we exceeded the 0.3 in January and then again in December. January, we were trying to get the filters to work a little bit better. They have not worked as they were intended to. January, we were doing some washing, chlorinating. They suspected we had an iron bacteria problem. Chlorinate, kill everything off. We had filters offline, a lot of washing going on, so our effluent quality during that time was not very good. And we exceeded the 0.3. And then in December, at the end of November, there was a spill at 3M where a boiler dumped a significant amount of basically antifreeze down the sewer line. We had a huge amount of foaming, a plant upset, and the whole month of December, the effluent quality was pretty poor. High solids, high biochemical oxygen demand, and high phosphorus, and we exceeded the 0.3 again. So that gives us a great point of 3.81, I think it comes out to. Yeah, 3.81. Everything else was a grade A. And we are continuing to work with the filters to try to get them, to optimize them. There's the construction project that will be happening at ConAgra that hopefully removes some of the grease and maybe lower their loading somewhat. We're hoping that improves our phosphorus filter performance. And then also on the report, we did have unplugged sewer kind of near the dam last year, 2024. It was partially plugged, and when the well backwashed, it overwhelmed and some water came out of the manhole and it got called in and we went out and responded, cleaned the line. We televised it, checked it. There were some roots in there. It wasn't completely plugged, but couldn't handle the flow when the wells backwash. So we have bumped up that schedule of cleaning and maintenance on that line. But televising didn't reveal any issues with the line other than possible roots that were there that we removed. That doesn't cost us any points. There was no damage or anything. But that just simply had to be mentioned on the CMAR as well. So, yeah, it goes before council for a resolution to accept the report. I can answer any questions if anyone has any.
Ryland?
The issue with the high phosphorus. Did you get that filter problem figured out, or is that going to be a reoccurring issue, do you see?
We're not meeting the 0.1 six-month average. We haven't had too much trouble with the 0.3 other than these two months. We haven't exceeded the 0.3 in 2025. Our phosphorus is running between 0.1 and 0.2. End of April, we had fairly good numbers under 0.1. And same thing happened last year. April was pretty good around the 20th, and then the month of May was, was real nice. We had a monthly average less than 0.1. We were hoping for repeat of that this May. We're not seeing it. We're running about 0.15 right now. We've made some chemical adjustments. There's, it doesn't seem to be a whole lot else we can do. If we turn the chemical dosing up too high, then the sand beds basically don't filter at all. See, there's a, there's a point where you can add too much chemical. And we've, we've seen that when we used ferric chloride. Now we're using polyaluminum chloride. Our hope was that polyaluminum chloride would work better than ferric chloride. It really hasn't. We're using less. But the cost is higher, so it's actually a little, a little less expensive to use polyaluminum chloride. But we haven't, we haven't been able to meet the limit with either chemical. Performance seems to be about the same. Advantage polyaluminum chloride is it's corrosive. It's not acidic like ferric chloride is. So it's, it's easier on equipment, and because we use less, even though the price per gallon is more, we're spending a little less, but we're still spending between $200 and $300 a day on chemical. One of the things that, that we were kind of coming to, to realize is we think we have a grease problem. The process that we have, a piece of sand gets coated with, it used to be ferric, now it's PAC. That attracts the phosphorus, then it goes through kind of a washing cycle. And that's supposed to release the phosphorus, and it kind of circles back through. One of, one of our theories, and it's a theory, not a, not a known, but some of the amount of oil, amount of fats and greases that we have in our wastewater, mostly from ConAgra, but some other users as well. We're, we're wondering if that whole process, the attaching the ferric or the PAC to the sand, the getting the phosphorus onto that, that charged particle and then releasing it at a later, you know, in the washing cycle is being kind of interrupted by that amount of grease. So back in December or January, I can't recall, we came to you folks with an agreement with ConAgra to do about a $7 million improvement. We are, right now, that project is under review. We're hoping to get that out for bids here within the next two months and then get started on that project. So we're hopeful that that will address the fat oil and grease issue and that that in turn will also help this phosphorus issue. I think it's worth noting, our old permit, and Paul can correct me if I'm wrong, our old permit was one part per million of phosphorus, and went down from one to 0.1, so a factor of 10. At the levels that we're at, at the 0.3, 0.2, 0.1, we're actually cleaner than the red cedar at the point at which we discharge it. So we're not contributing to the delinquency of the river, but we're not, it's not meeting the, the limits that we have in our six-month average.
Wow. Anyone else for questions? Oh, Lee, I'm sorry.
That's why I get for sitting in the corner. Paul, I see we got about 3,000 acres that we can spread the bio waste on, and last year was 224. So I assume we have that much potential because we're rotating. And if we're rotating, how often does a field get the bio waste?
It, it kind of depends. We, we rotate fields. We lost some fields to approval because of the radium testing that we had to do. There's a, a small amount of radium in our sludge, and there always has been. They dropped the radium limits right before I started in 2004. We had a new permit. And then they brought it back five years ago under the current permit. Rules say that if there's any detectable radium, then you have to follow the radium rules for land application of sludge. And the problem with that is clay content in the soil. The soils out in the Rust Prairie area where we land apply are mostly aracid sandy loam, which does not contain an 18% clay layer in the top five feet. It's got to be six inches, 18%. There is a Dakota silt loam out there that has that. So a lot of our, our, our fields were, were no longer approved. We did do some core soil sampling and did find the clay, and the DNR accepted those results. But yes, we've got a lot approved, but I, those have been on the approval list for a long time. Some of those haven't been used in a long time, and I think if I went to land apply them, we, we may lose approval on quite a few of those. So we need about 300 acres a year. But we've lost a lot of, of what we have had. So the rotation, generally, we, we can go on a field every year depending on the crop. We don't really like, farmers don't really like the compaction of the soil from all of our trucks. So we try and rotate it out every two or three years on, on various fields.
I'm kind of curious about this because way, many, many years ago, when I used to be on the farm, we got sludge from the Madison sewage plant. And looked at you go through with all the testing and that, and that was back in the 50s. And I, plus we didn't chisel it in. It was just spread on top surface and probably ended up doing a lot of floating we didn't realize.
So, yeah, we've been working with quelling farms. I, I do have a few new farmers that were interested, and their soil did pass. So I've, I've gotten some fields approved lately that we hadn't used before. Schaefer Farms is one of them. We had three fields. We've applied on two of them. We'd like to do another one this fall. We generally do surf apply it in the skin. Schaefer likes to do no-till, so in that case, we surface apply, which we are allowed to do, but it changes application rates and setbacks and things like that. So I just have to apply it a, a little different way, but we can do both surface or incorporation.
Sydney?
Yeah, I just have a question. So while we're waiting for that improvement project for ConAgra, is there anything we can do to like limit the amount of fat and grease they're dumping? Or is it just kind of waiting?
Monitoring it. Not, not really. That, I mean, it, it, a lot of it gets caught in our screen. We've always gotten a lot of grease from ConAgra for decades, but something changed with their grease. I think it was spring of 2021 where we started seeing it throughout the plant beyond the primary clarifiers. And we had just reconstructed one of the primary clarifiers, and then we noticed that. And I thought it was that clarifier wasn't performing quite right because we're seeing grease in our final effluent. The lab technician would see it in his sample, what, that he would filter. We were noticing it in our sludge, little specks of white grease that we never saw before. We investigated that clarifier. I bought a, a commercial basically butterfly net and stuck it in the outfall and caught little particles of grease. We did the same thing to the existing clarifier that had no construction work done on it, and it looked the same. So I thought, well, it's not the clarifier. There's something changed with their grease. We don't know what it is. ConAgra doesn't know what it is. Coconut oil, I think, is what they, we, we sent a sample off. ConAgra's lab analyzed it. I believe it was coconut oil. And I don't know what changed. They haven't been able to pinpoint anything that's changed. I don't know if it's a chemical or an emulsifier or, you know, they, they use a lot of different cleaners and we're not sure why, but at about that time in 2021, we started seeing it carry on through the plant. And that's when we started getting concerned about it with these filters because they were constructing them at the time. And then we started monitoring sampling and found out that they were over the sewer use ordinance for grease. And we started pushing them to, to do something about it.
Okay, good. I was just making sure that they were taking some sort of responsibility and taking some sort of steps, not just us to resolve.
Tried to reduce it as much as they can, but it's, it's just part of the product, too. It's with all the cleaning and, and everything that they do.
If I could jump in real quick, I think part of the, how they're taking responsibility is, is that agreement that we have to build that DAF where they're, they're completely paying for it. So that's coming at, what was that, a seven and a half million dollar expense that, that they're going to be doing? So I, I would say, once they knew that there was the problem and, and we entered negotiations to try to resolve it, they were very good to work with on trying to, trying to get to a solution. And I think that that was a, a real positive one for them. And we obviously don't have to pay for that.
Yeah.
In, in addition to the costs on it, any ongoing maintenance, buying trucks for it, they're paying for everything. All of our testing, all of our labor that goes into it, too. They're reimbursing the city for it, so they are taking 100% of the cost moving forward on that.
Lovely. And I know you said in two months, we'll start hopefully bidding. Do you have like an expected time that it will take once it gets groundbreaking?
Yeah, we're, we're hoping that that plant or the DAF will be in, in operation by next fall.
Okay.
So it's probably about a 15-month construction period.
Gretchen?
In that vein, with regards to the 3M event, were we alerted in immediately, or was there any delay in that alerting? And have we changed anything with regards to our ability to react and try to keep it under those limits? If we have enough time, is there a way for us to do that?
Well, we, we contacted 3M. Well, they contacted us and said they had a spill. We noticed changes at the plant right away. They had a number of things go wrong with this boiler that, I don't remember all the details, but they, they got that corrected. I think it was a new installation, some of the high-level float in, in the pit that it drains to, and the event that it would overflow wasn't installed yet. And they, they made those changes. As far as notifying the public, there, there really was no public health impact or any, any requirement to notify the public. We just simply exceeded our phosphorus.
I'm referring to them notifying us and making sure that we're, like, if there's any way to mitigate, like, on our end, once we know what's coming, if we, if there's any way, because I suppose it's pretty immediate that it's coming through the pipes there. Did they notify immediately? Or if they had, if it, or was there a delay? And if it had been faster, we may have been able to not have that increased event?
The time they discovered it, it had already gone down the drain.
Okay.
And it would, it had already come to us, and there was no way to stop it. It had already made its way into the system.
Did they change it? Have we worked with them about maybe changing their alert systems so that they discover things sooner to prevent that?
They made some changes with, with this boiler to make sure that that can't happen again.
Okay. Is there any way for us to not have, you know, it go over 0.3? Is there any way for us to, you know, it's, it's coming quickly, but to deal with an event like that? If, you know, I don't know. Is there anything we can do to, you know, it, it, not necessarily 3M or, you know, ConAgra, but other manufacturing or other, you know, events that occur? Did we have an option if we could figure out how to, you know, not have it go over 0.3? Or is it just, we just had to deal with it because there was no way to mitigate that occurring? You know what I mean?
Yeah. When it, when it's on its way and it's, it, it came through the plant on the Saturday of, of Thanksgiving. Basically, it was, it, it wasn't a phosphorus issue. It was a, a high BOD issue, high-strength waste coming through and sends us a biological system that basically upset our bugs, basically. We overfed them for a couple of days, and it upset everything. There was a lot of foaming, a lot of solid. The key to good treatment is for our biomass to settle out and leave the clean water behind, and it wasn't settling. There were a lot of solids, a lot of foaming. Not so much the phosphorus in the 3M waste, but the phosphorus contained in the cell mass, and it just stayed in the water. And our BODs were high, our solids were high. Once it's, it's in the system and it's coming to the plant, there's really no way to, to isolate it. We get a million and a half gallons a day coming in to separate out at that point. It's, it's too late.
As for the, any future events occurring, they're going to be from a manufacturing source? Or is it possible that another source could cause such an event?
Well, it just, from a, from a volume standpoint, it's, it's going to be from the commercial or industrial. I think it's worth noting for, so for 3M, they had, it was on one of their radiators or other boilers. It had a temperature pressure valve that released a bunch of stuff that it wasn't supposed to. The setting was just wrong. The system kept calling for pressure, and this T P valve was discharging. They didn't have enough of onsite collection for the amount of material that was in there. They they've adjusted the settings on this T P valve, they've added some onsite collection. It's not to say that they can't at some point discharge some things that we don't want. But this this situation will not reoccur.
What's the DNR's compliance enforcement triggers? Is it one six month average hit? Is it back to back six months average hits? How does that work? What will trigger like an NOV for the city?
Generally, we get a notice of noncompliance with the six month point one. We have not had a notice yet, which kind of surprises us. We have talked to the DNR. They, because we're working with ConAgra, we're we're trying to solve this and ConAgra is willing to put this system in. I think that's, they're being a little more patient with us, I I suspect. But yeah, we haven't, we haven't made a six month limit since we, they look at basically November through April and then May through October. They look at us, yeah, and it's not a moving window. It's it's, that's what they look at. So we've had, I think, three of those now. And we haven't received a notice yet of violation, so. And it's worth noting, we've been in constant communication with DNR. This is from from the jump, this has been an issue we've been having at this point. The, they're not going to find out about the issue when they get our testing results. We've.
Anyone else have a question? Okay. Paul, thank you. That's a lot of information. Shouldn't do a doctor. Okay. There it is.
You can use mine.
Okay, if there are no other questions.
I was gonna make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash eleven regarding the sewer utility twenty twenty-four compliance maintenance annual report.
Very good. Sir, second. Sydney?
I second.
Again, any questions? Seeing none. Let's see, it's simple majority. Just all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Carrie's. Okay, there are no budget transfers. I see that we have. Yeah, the mayor didn't give me your report. No report. So how about everybody else? Communications and miscellaneous business? Ben?
Eric? I have a real quick one. So we talked a little bit about it last year. We're in the process of developing some easy application processes for those persons that want to apply for tax increment dollars. Some of our tax increment districts have programs like loan facade repair, some renovation type pieces. We're looking at bringing forward to council both an easy application for you to consider to allow approving, as well as a system process for staff to do quick reviews on small projects for approval to see what you're comfortable with. And then hopefully at some point during the course of this year, get a process approved in place. So that way, if people are looking at doing things like making those repairs to buildings, tuck pointing, sun insulation, home renovations within our TIDS on dilapidated houses that we're able to do something like that. So that's coming up on on the horizon. We're also looking at a, oh, there was another conversation as well about grant the applications for subsidy funding as a way to transition to that to help aid with the budgeting process. So we're going to start bringing forward some ideas towards this body to consider here in the next couple of meetings. And then last thing, and then I promise to stop talking. Maybe not promise, but maybe now I hope to stop talking. So there's been some questions about downtown with the building that had been burned and taken down. And if there's any kind of ways that there are emergency funding or connections that we can bring. Unfortunately, right now the state does not have set programs for like single incidents like this. So we did try to look to see if that's a possibility. The good news is, is that there are other funding opportunities through like the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation that can provide some funding assistance. It is also within tax increment districts. So if people are looking to rebuild, we do have some options within both TID fifteen and TID nineteen that we can try to help facilitate redevelopment of our downtown. I know it's a tragic, it's a very tragic thing that happened. And we're hoping that once people have had an opportunity to work through insurance, have the structures investigated to make sure that they're sound, if they're not, then we can have hopefully a path to move forward and help them rebuild. All right, now I will stop for the moment.
Okay, our deputy clerk.
Nothing to report. There's a lot of licenses, so.
Uh, yeah. Lee?
Well, what you're just talking about, Eric, I know for a long time the mayor talked about having public restrooms in the downtown area. And if there's no other potential for whether they're going to do that, would that be a possibility to look at putting public restrooms in there and making a little park along with it?
I think there are definitely opportunities. It depends on what the current property owners want to do and and this may be a time too to also look at triggering some redevelopment too in that whole downtown area. Because there are some buildings that are for sale and we have some options within the tax increment district that was recently created. So I, I think this is an opportunity for us to take a look at what our vision for that downtown area looks like and how the city and the city council can play a part in that role.
Abby? No? Gretchen? Eric? Matt?
What kind of water park is open this Saturday? It'll be open on the weekends all summer through August twenty-fourth. On the weekends, Friday to Sunday from eleven AM to seven PM. Monday through Thursdays, twelve thirty PM to seven PM. So bring the kids, bring the family, got the big chair out there. It'll be a fun summer with that. And then Doc and Dominique has their fundraising golf outing on Wednesday, June eleventh. So if you don't have a team yet, get your team signed up and it's a nine o'clock check-in, ten thirty shotgun start.
Right. Jeff? No? Dave?
The Phil Park Playground, we poured the concrete sidewalk around about three quarters of it today. We're going to get the chips in and then pour the the last of the sidewalk hopefully by the end of the week. As of right now, we're looking to do a ground or grand opening on June nineteenth. I'll get some information off of the council if you'd like to attend that, but the afternoon of June nineteenth is the current plan. So it's been a long time coming. It's been, it's quite an improvement over what was there before, if you haven't been over there. And particularly if you remember what the old playground looked like, it's it's pretty impressive. So we're hopeful to, hopefully it's good to turn out that.
I don't know if I was a little kid. I don't know if I crawled on that thing. Okay, um, Randy? No? Oh, Sydney.
I just got something. So someone reached out to me and they were saying how the boat landing that we did is getting a lot of positive feedback, which I wanted to share because that's awesome. And that there was interest from the engineering department by one of the professors to help build something down there to make it disability slash handicap friendly. And so I'm going to try and reach out to the professor and see if I can find out information to connect us because I think that'd be a really cool semester project. I just want to share that.
Very good. Okay. If that's it, then we will go ahead and let's see. We have claims, we have a revised claims list that was on your desk. Any questions? Well, Lee?
I'm still in the corner. I just got a question. You got this Maxwell Trucking Repair. The Maxwell Trucking, I know of south of Durand and looks like a truck graveyard down there. Is this actually who did the work? And what else do they have? Because it looks like collecting old trucks is their main talent.
I I can't speak to their old truck collection, but my understanding is they did the work and they did fine work. David, do you want to expound upon that?
I would not, but I'm sure Paul could. With that, the bill for fourteen thousand some dollars or?
Seventeen nine.
Seventeen overall.
That's our, that's our sludge hauler. So when we land spread, that's who does hauling for us. He does a good job and he's fairly inexpensive. We used to pay three cents a gallon back in oh four. And when I found Chris at Maxwell Truck, he came in at a penny and a half. And now he's up to about two cents a gallon. So over twenty years and he's cheaper than we were paying twenty years ago. He does good work. But you're right, it's it's a site down there in Maxwell.
I assume they did repair work. I I saw them hauling. I happen to meet. Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, there when those trucks are hauling.
Builds those tanks and he actually gets old garbage trucks from New York City and converts them into sludge hauling trucks for farmers. He's using them for us. They have the two steering wheels. So he can, he can rebuild pretty much anything, it seems like. But yeah, that's what that is.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Still the claims. So anybody, Lee?
I might as well finish this up. I'll make a motion to approve the revised claim list for the evening.
Abby?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign.
Does that have to be roll call? Yeah.
Oh, yeah, roll call. Okay.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfield?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Crow?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yonko?
Yes.
Peggard?
Yes.
Schwab?
Yes.
Gens isn't here. Solberg?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Thank you.
You want to talk about the license?
Yeah, I can, if you don't mind.
No.
Presented today, we have licenses. There is no normal license list here today. So I'm going to direct your attention to the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six license renewal list. So this is our our license holders that are renewing. Of course, this year, you're going to see another big list like this at the next meeting. Just so you note, as we had made changes here today, we had two licenses that withdrew from application because one was going to be selling a business, so they needed to surrender a license. And that is going to be the Abbey Pub and Grub. The owner of that is going to sell to a new owner so that they never surrender the license. And then the new license will come before you as it's been published. And then we also have Exit forty-five that wants to pull and surrender their license, which they can do the sale and they want to do basically like liquor sale or liquor store type sale, class A license versus selling onsite for consumption, which is class B. So they want to surrender that surrender that class B and then come back before this council for a class A in the future. The rest of the licenses that are presented before you are the normal, or excuse me, not the normal license list, but our operator renewals and license renewals for the year. Does that make sense? There are no normal, like, renewals here and then there are no, like, new ones for consideration.
I have a question. Um, is the pub open or did they close?
The pub is open sporadically. So they're not closed, but they're open enough to keep the license.
Ah, okay.
It is for sale.
Opportunity. Okay, well. So taking a look at the license list. But entertain a motion. To Jeff?
I'll make a motion to approve the revised normal license list as presented.
Yeah, Jeff, it would be a motion to approve the revised twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six license renewal list as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five dash twenty twenty-six license renewal list as presented.
Revised, right?
Revised one.
Because we had those two pulled away. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. You thought that was going to be.
Sorry about that. A little confusing on that one.
Okay, Eric?
I'll sign a motion.
Okay.
This is a majority vote.
So if there's not any other questions, all those in favor of the license list as presented, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Carrie's.
All right.
Okay, is that it?
We are it. We're at the.
Okay, well, Cory's not here to send us home, so who wants to adjourn? Abby does.
I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
Sir, second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. And everybody want to go home, say aye?
Aye.
And opposed, say aye. Carrie's.
All right. Thank you, everybody.